This is Deng.
Here.
This is Ellis.
Here.
This is Essler.
Yes.
This is Hilfertie. This is Jones.
Here.
This is Powell.
Here.
Mr. Cissack.
Here.
Mr. Tinsley.
Here.
Mr. Arm.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Zebly. To start the meeting, I'm going to jump down to number eight. Oh, and for board information. No objections. Tonight's my honor to report that one of our own, Cynthia Kravitz, has been selected as a recipient of the PAGE Outstanding Educator Award for 2021. PAGE stands for the Pennsylvania Association for Gifted Education, an affiliate of the National Association for Gifted Children since 1951. PAGE is dedicated to helping gifted learning parents and educators. And since joining us in 1993, Cynthia has been excellent example of that dedication. Congratulations, Cynthia, and thank you for being part of what makes us Pendelco.
Oh, you can't go wrong without with flowers.
No, no, no. Good evening. I said, I asked my secretary, so I should have purchased a set for my wife. Although she would say to me, what did you do? Because I walked in with it. But these are gorgeous flowers that you deserve on behalf of our school board.
I want this for you guys to look at.
We will show them.
I want to take it home, but.
You also received, Cindy, a certificate of commendation from the school district. And this is for you as well. I'm going to hold that for you. I'm going to have Fran take a picture for us.
Okay. Oh, my goodness.
And let's put you right over here in the center.
All right.
Are you out to talk a little bit about your phenomenal presentation that I've heard about?
I didn't plan anything. I got to.
A little bit of that camera. You want to move over?
Yes.
Thank you, Fran.
Yep.
So this award indicated from PAGE Outstanding Educator Award presented by PAGE Cynthia Kravitz, Pendelco School District 2021. Her selection represented a selection from all the gifted educators across the state of Pennsylvania. And that's what we were so proud of her. I know she doesn't have anything prepared, but I also heard you did a tremendous.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you speech. If you wanted to share with the board how that went and some of your finer comments, you're certainly welcome to. I'll take this from you. Want to step over there?
Sure. Sure.
Thanks, Cynthia.
No problem. We can ring this. This is good. I have been working with gifted kids a long time. I have been a PAGE member for many, many, many years. You cannot imagine the joy it brings to me to work with children. And the gifted population challenges you in ways that you never even thought you were going to be stretched. And I love that. And I like the flexibility and I like to see when they achieve. So let's try a little bit of a, let's try a gifted thing. I want you to think for a second. So what's it all about? What are you thinking? What are you thinking about right now? Think about it for a second. What are you thinking? Everyone has that thought? No one raised their hand and said, what am I supposed to be thinking about? Because you know, that's what kids in the classroom do. What do you want me to say? What do you want me to do? What are you thinking about? Now, very quickly, turn to the person next to you. And make a connection with what you are thinking and what they are thinking. Doesn't matter if you're thinking two totally different things. Make that connection. Make that connection. Okay, let's bring it on back. So what you've just been asked to do is think for a minute what you are thinking about, not give an idea, and then connect it with another person who's thinking, at the same time you're thinking about any number of things. You can make connections with our fellow learners. You can make connections wherever we're going. And part of pushing our students to grow, to learn, to do their best, is having them know they're not living in a bubble. Although it seemed that way the past year, a year or so, that we're all by ourselves. We're not. And we can make those connections. Is that what you were hoping for?
Yeah. Cynthia, I just heard wonderful comments from people that were at the conference who said that your acceptance speech was terrific. So we're very proud of you. Thank you so much. Round of applause again.
I was blown away when I saw all of the quotes that the students had. Because I hadn't seen some of those students. They're in high school now, or they're in middle school. And none of the elementary kids were asked to speak. So I thought that was just, it's a good experience here. It's a very good experience.
Well, thank you for your dedication. Well deserved. Excuse me, I'm going to have to ask if a couple just came in. You're going to have to wear a mask inside the building.
Seriously?
Yes, sir.
Last week we did.
It's a public meeting and the public's here, we have to wear masks. It's part of the district policy. It's a state requirement. It's not mine. I mean, we have some if you need it, but. Thank you very much.
State's headquarters, one.
Thank you. 2.01 is approval of minutes. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 27th and the special meeting November 10th, 2021. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. Motion is to approve the invoice listing for October through November 2021. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasury report. Ms. Powell.
As of September 30th, 2021, Pendelco's balance was $56,013,294. During October 2021, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $3,602,869. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $4,620,862. As of October 31st, 2021, Pendelco's current balance is $54,995,302. The motion is to approve the treasury report for October 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, student representatives report to the board. Ms. Olson, Ms. Zito.
Hi, I'm Gianna Ellis, and I'd like to start by mentioning the end of fall sports. Other than the remaining Turkey Bowl game on Thanksgiving, all of the fall sports have come to an end. Volleyball ended with a second round playoff appearance, and the marching band shed into second place in the state, but color guard notably won first. Gears are shifting and winter sports trials begin this Friday, the 19th, for students who have their updated physical paperwork in and approved. Alongside our usual winter sports, the cold months also mark the start of our ultimate frisbee club season. Means if you'll be there. Good luck to all trying out and the future of this season's sports. Class of 2022 seniors have also prepared the variety show, which will take place on Friday and Saturday night at 7:00 PM in the Northly Middle School Auditorium. Seating is limited and the tickets are $7 each. Tickets will not be sold at the door. Masks are required for all audience members. Finally, on November 9th, the National Honor Society held a small ceremony for the induction of its new members. The inductee class was the largest Sun Valley has ever seen. Sophie and I got to be a part of the induction, and it was wonderful to get to recognize over 30 well-qualified students who value community activity alongside academic excellence. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. The first thing I would like to touch on is the end of the first marking period. The first marking period officially ended on Friday, November 12th of last week, and our school has begun the transition into the second marking period as of this Monday, November 15th. That being said, the report cards for this marking period will be posted this upcoming Friday, November 19th. Next, I will inform you of all of our early dismissals and off days for next week. Our school's upcoming early dismissal for Thanksgiving break will occur next Wednesday, November 24th. Students will have off on Thanksgiving, the 25th, and the next Friday, the 26th. I'm 100% sure our students will enjoy this nice long four and a half day weekend that they deserve after all of their hard work for these past three months. Renovations to our score are still proceeding and making great progress. There has been a lot of construction regarding the gym, auditorium, wrestling hallway, and our athletic trainer's office. We are very happy to see these long-waited modernizations put into effect and are so excited to see the end results. Thank you so much for having me again, and that is all I have for you today.
Thank you, ladies. You're welcome to go, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting. It's up to you.
Thank you.
We have to go back. I did skip over 2.04, Budget Transfer Report. My apologies. Motion is to approve Budget Transfer Report for October through November 2021. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Powell with DCIU report.
DCIU report. Veterans Day Parade. The Veterans Day Parade was on for Thursday, November 11th, 2021. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit, along with Veterans Legacy Project, pardon me, partnered to run an essay contest. This year, the prompt for the essay was tell a veteran's story and then for his or her sacrifices. DCIU is pleased to announce the following winners of the 2021 Veterans Day Essay Contest. First place, Cameron McKellen, Kellen, sorry, grade six ET Richardson Middle School. Second place was Jamie Scott from Springton Lake, grade six. Third place was Angelina Frazier from ET Richardson. Next thing, Low Incidents Playground. The students in the Low Incidents Program were able to utilize our new program, pro playground, excuse me, at the Marco Education Center. Students were able to interact with their classmates by trying out the new equipment. It was definitely worth the wait, and we all look forward to many more days on the playground. This was one of the five new playgrounds updated at the DCIU. Early Childhood Education Summit 2021. Early Childhood Education Summit was held virtually this year from October 18th to October 20th. Increased awareness of cultural responsiveness, civil stewardship, environmental education, and mindfulness were included in daily professional development sessions. Days opened with virtual yoga activities, wellness, and staffing discussions, along with program priorities were at the base of most, if not all, sessions as we were all facing similar difficulties this program year, but wants to implement the best practices for staff until the late.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Number five is tonight's superintendent report. Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Mr. Arm. Step over here a little closer to Jack. Report for this moment. Very happy to start out by congratulating the Sun Valley Marching Band. I mentioned to them last month, indicated that they were really having a great season. And I was thrilled to see their performance last Friday night. The community came out in force. They did a show before the Palpadea, the band, which is a sense of their state championship. And I looked up in the stands and saw as many people there as we get for many of our highly graded athletic contests, football games. It was wonderful to see so many relatives come out for them to do their presentation, an actual full show. First time I saw the full show. And I guess because I'm getting older, sometimes I get tears to my eyes when I hear or see really exceptional live performances from students. And I had that that night because of their transitions, because of their coordination. And I see a group of Sun Valley students every summer, hot days in the parking lot, beginning to put it all together. You leave at nights of time, 7:00, they're on the field under the lights practicing. And it was a sign to me that life is getting back to normal. You know, students had an opportunity to do a presentation, to put something really special together that they will remember for a long time. They made a lot of great friends in the process. All the things that you want to see in an activity. And it was also evident, we hear so much about, you know, students today, they're not dedicated, they're lethargic coming out of COVID years. And that's not the case with this group. And it was a sign of the kind of kids that we have up in Sun Valley. Gianna mentioned the National Honor Society Assembly as well. And the induction ceremony was really powerful. There's a really particularly strong and talented group of kids that were just inducted in the NHS. A new class is coming into Sun Valley. A lot of enthusiasm, really just all around great kids, high character, service oriented, artistic, athletic, academic, you name it. Combination of the induction ceremony last Monday night and their presentation Friday, their show on Saturday was great. You see, they just, gosh, they got so close. They left and I had heard someone sitting behind me said, going to be a tough match against Susquehanna. And sure enough, Susquehanna was number one. But, you know, they beat teams like Hattelford, Metha, and Valley, Waltham Gardens School District, Washington Township in New Jersey is an enormous high school. And they did great. And it's just a wonderful sign of all the kind of kids that we have at our high school and the great things that they accomplish when you put your mind together, you work, and you have fun doing it. Well, tonight, point out an event we had on October 29th called Proud of Me Day. First time this has happened in the school district. Principal Tara Young and her team were planning as they were looking ahead to Halloween. And they recognized that, you know, year in and year out, you know, you get kids come in in the dinosaur costumes or the monster costumes. Maybe they could do something else with that and make it a fun day. It would actually build off of our district mission statement. And over the summer, I challenged our administrators to not forget about the third part of our mission statement, which is to ensure that students can excel at a special area or count of interest. We want every student to leave our district saying, I'm really good at A. I'm really good at B. I'm really good at C. And that begins with elementary kids. And our teachers asking them, what is your super skill? You know, what's your superhero power? And Dr. Kneke and I were there that day. We saw presentations from kids who were in costumes and outfits and dress ups, representing what they feel that they're really great at. One girl was talking about how she wanted to be a dancer, and she would just finished her fifth lesson, and how she's a great dancer. And it was just so wonderful to see kids excited about themselves and their skills. We had a video of this day put together, and I'm happy to show that to you. Just a couple of minutes, but I really think everybody should take a look at what's happening in Parkside, a wonderful school. And it gives you a good snapshot into the type of students that we have in our elementary schools.
Hello, my name is Tara Young, and I'm the proud principal at Parkside Elementary School. On Friday, October 29th, we had our first Proud of Me Day. And that was a day that came about basically as an extension of two things. One, we were trying to figure out a way to sum up Red Ribbon Week, where students make a commitment to be drug and alcohol free. And really, it's a way for them to recognize like who they are as their best self. Alongside that, our PBIS committee met this summer, and one of the things that we talked about is how we can build some confidence in our kids and how we can get them to recognize their potential, not just as academics, but as, you know, people and artists and, you know, creative members of our school community. So Proud of Me Day is a day that our PBIS committee came up with over the summer. And really, one of the things that we thought about is how to get kids excited about what it is that they excel in, what their talents are, what their interests are. And our students are always super excited to get dressed up for Halloween, but we thought we could capitalize on that excitement by tying it into a way for them to identify what their talent, interests, or their area of expertise is, and how they can bring that to the school community as a whole. So our students were encouraged to dress up wearing things that represented their talent or area of interest. It was a really good balance of creative, also academic, and also athletic ventures that our students represented throughout the day. I think Proud of Me Day did a couple of things that we anticipated that it would accomplish this year. It allowed students to share some information about themselves and about that other aspect other than the academic. But it also just taught us a lot about our students and how passionate they can be about things that are school related, but also not school related. And it also built some confidence in some of our students who really have been struggling post-pandemic to figure out where they fit. And this was just a really good way to remind them that, you know, they are special, that they have qualities about them that make them them, and that those really unique qualities are things that their friends are also interested in learning about as well. I think that one of the biggest things that we did to prepare students for Proud of Me Week was we had everyone fill out a puzzle piece that was representative of their interests with the things that they were passionate about. They put words, they drew pictures, they colored, or didn't color, depending on what their interests or their idea was. And we used those puzzle pieces to build a puzzle mural. You know, in reflection above it, it says Proud of Me because it was Proud of Me Day. But that puzzle mural really did show how each interlocking piece brought something to our school community. And really, what we shouldn't have called it was Proud of Us because all of those individual puzzle pieces built together one school community that has a lot of strengths and a lot of unique qualities that when brought together, just build a really positive and productive environment. So Proud of Me Day really showed us as a school community what our strengths are and also how many great talents and how many passionate students we have here at Parkside Elementary. And that makes me a very proud principal.
Round of applause for our senior producer, Ms. Powell. Yelly, who does a wonderful job highlighting the great things happening in our schools as well, certainly for Parkside and for Ms. Young, for which he's doing as well. One of the principals over there in a fantastic school. So Test to Stay was unveiled this month. We send email messages to families and staff explaining the Test to Stay program. This was designed to limit the number of COVID asymptomatic students and staff in quarantine as close contacts. That's been the greatest challenge that you've had where students are identified or staff are identified as a possible close contact, and yet they're asymptomatic, and yet they feel fine, and they have to unfortunately quarantine. With our agreement with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, we have a memorandum agreement that enables our nurses now, if you're in close contact in school, to test the child. As long as they have three negative results after a couple of days in between each test, they can stay. And it's important to note that part of that agreement, though, requires you to wear a mask. And that should be kept in mind because we anticipate continuing to use Test to Stay as a way to keep kids in school, and that will last beyond the mask mandate order. So we anticipate that the mask mandate order will end on December 4th. Test to Stay as an ability to keep people in school requires that. So superintendents will be working with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit to see if there's a modification that can be put in place with this memorandum agreement because we recognize what that might mean, right? It might be calling students out because they're wearing a mask or whether they are close contact. It's just another challenge that we're going to have to navigate as we, you know, move out of this period where the Pennsylvania mask order comes to an end. And we'll talk a little bit more on that. Yes?
Quick question.
Yes.
So you're saying that if the mask mandate went in on the 4th, or if it went in, if a child is under the Test to Stay protocol with the three negatives, they need to, they need to be masked to stay in school until their third negative result?
That's correct. And the memorandum agreement does require the parent to sign off on the fact that the child will wear a mask because they were in close contact. So possibly they could be a carrier. And I think superintendents and Dr. Edelberg at the IU, who's been spearheading this with Children's Hospital, are now confronting this potential inconsistency. And it's making the board aware that it's something that we have to take a look at, that we didn't anticipate until this change in the mask order developed over the last week. American Education Week is this week. Unfortunately, it's still limited. We were typically in the past, have many more school visitors or parents coming into our schools to kind of see the great things happening. American Education Week began, it went back in 1921. And it is a great reminder about the treasure guarantee that exists for every child born in this country. Regardless of ability, regardless of wealth, regardless of race, regardless of religion, you have a chance to get a free and appropriate education in this country, something that many countries can't commit to, but ours can. America's schools and its teachers and staff provided that educational foundation for all of the future leaders and workers who continue to power one of the greatest economies in the world. I often find it interesting to listen to CNBC. People who will extol our country as the greatest nation on earth and our economy as the most powerful economy around will then say, but our schools. And that's an inconsistency I will never understand because it's our schools that are creating the employees who are powering the greatest economy in the world. So everyone committed to ensuring all children have free access to an outstanding education. We want to thank them for their support and their service. Hopefully, next year, we will be able to open our doors again and have visitors come in during American Education Week. The current state of the mask order, Mr. Arm had asked a little bit about that. Masking requirements remain in effect in our schools and in all school facilities as a result of the stay to the court ruling on masks in Pennsylvania schools. The governor had previously indicated the mask mandate would expire on January 17th, 2022. There was then a Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling that indicated that that order was invalid. The governor's office then challenged that, attributed automatic stay. Supreme Court then came back and said the stay is scheduled to end on December 4th. And absent any other court challenges or decision, that too could be appealed to the Supreme Court. Decisions on masking will revert to local school district health and safety plans. As a reminder, our board has an approved health and safety plan that says masks are recommended, but not required to be worn unless ordered to do so by the state or another agency of authority. So the board should be aware that if the mandate ends on December 4th in Pendelco, unless the board changes its health and safety plan, in Pendelco, it would mean that we would be recommending that students and staff continue to wear masks, but they would not be required to do so. And if the board wants to change that, a board member would have to make a motion to amend that health and safety plan. The board would vote on it. But currently, that would be our mode of operation. Given that current high level of COVID cases within our region, now I think it is important that we say, we recommend you wear a mask. The kids have gotten used to it. That's what we're saying. Some parents might feel otherwise. There will be some accommodations then for those parents who would say, you know what? I just, I don't think my child needs to wear the mask. If you vaccinate it, that mandate then won't be in effect. With the availability of vaccinations now for students in the 5 to 11 age group, we are seeing increasing numbers of students that have vaccine protection. We are hopeful that that's going to help curb the numbers of positive cases. On the agenda tonight, we're asking the board to approve Dr. Linda Giles, who is a current Sun Valley High School assistant principal. She is being recommended as an interim principal effective December 1st, 2021. Mr. Sassy's last day, but thus will be the last day in November. He will be starting A New Hope in December. And very happy to and confident to recommend Dr. Linda Giles, who will serve while we're doing our search. Very high level of outlook and interest in this position. Unquestionably has exceeded the expectations in terms of the amount of people who have applied for consideration to be the next principal at Sun Valley. Thought that was a wonderful sign, and we look forward to a very productive search for the next principal of Sun Valley. And we've got a holiday coming up. So my staff, my administration, which entire Pendelco community and our school board, a restful and enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday, hopefully a win in Chichester. Given the external challenges that educators are facing this year, I have never, never been more thankful for the dedicated and talented employees that we have serving our students and community. They are trusted professionals, and we can be grateful. For this Thanksgiving, I am grateful for the Pendelco community, our staff, and our school board, all who are serving our students. That concludes my superintendent report, Ms. Zito. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. Announcements for the public. Tonight, the board met in executive session to discuss personnel litigation matters. Announcements by members of the board. We already did number eight. Orders for board information. Dr. Steinoff does have one.
Thank you. Under orders for board information, I want to pass around the proposed schedule for our board meeting that the members of the public might not be aware. That the members of the public might not be aware, the board approves its meeting schedule during a rework meeting, which will be held the first Monday in December. We have, to our board members, we, you know, Sharon Barrett and I have taken the liberty to prepare proposed schedule. That matches what we have had in place every year. I would just point out that we will continue to have our study sessions generally on the third Wednesday of each month. We would have our voting session on the fourth Wednesday of each month. So for instance, our first scheduled meeting in 2022 would be a work session on January 19th, followed by a voting board meeting on the 26th. I would point out that we have one meeting in July currently scheduled, and that would be July 20th. I would also point out that the board has appreciated the November meetings not impacting Thanksgiving week. So November would be the second and third Wednesday with rework on December 5th of 2022. So this would be the proposed calendar that we would have the board approve at the rework meeting. And if you have any suggestions or concerns or questions, please communicate those to the board president or myself, and we'll make some adjustments on the calendar before I next meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Steinoff. Anyone else? Comments by members of the public? So items for board action, start on page two, page three, four, five, and conclude on page six. Preferences for Pendelco Budget 2021 and 2022, Act 93 plans, PDEA agreement, PDESPA agreement, PDSSPA agreement, and PA Code Section 1108B. And as the administrative recommendation, we'll approve all personnel items as presented. So I have this motion. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We're going to do a consent agenda tonight for items 10.04 through 10.12. Does any member wish to pull an agenda item to be voted on? All right, with that, I need a motion to approve 10.04 through 10.12. Please note, contracts, preparation, solicitation have been subject to review and approval of the solicitor. So I have this motion. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number 11, comments by members of the public? Comments by members of the board?
I just wanted to, just because it's come up, I just wanted to bring up the holiday. I'm sorry, the winter formal that was canceled. I had a lot of questions kind of come at me. I'm assuming we must cancel because of the COVID restrictions. I guess a question I really wanted to ask, would there be a possibility to do something in the normal month outside as we've done in the coming eight and six and seventh grade?
Yeah, the principals in speaking, you know, with some of the PTL reps, they have some feedback, why don't we have an outdoor winter formal? And the weather finally, it's just, it's potentially too cold. You know, particularly, we know how, you know, middle school kids, that one of the first events. We don't, we don't know if they would necessarily dress. The way you would want them to dress for an outdoor event that might be three hours, they might not want to stay in their coats and their gloves. Just know the impact of kids getting excited about the event that could potentially be canceled because of weather or really not be ideal isn't as good as the potential of rescheduling it. So in talking with principals on any of those events, those winter formals that have been canceled, the hope was that they could circle back to that, perhaps later in the wintertime. COVID numbers are down, maybe we have some less restrictions. You might have to require now, like you recommended that you wear a mask, but you might not be required to wear a mask. So there just may be some more options for a better event later in the wintertime. Something else to make up for the fact that it just did not seem like they could pull that outdoors with a lot of confidence. And even with the event at Sun Valley that night when we did the homecoming, that was a cold night, you know, and that was, you know, one and a half ago. So we do, we do worry that just, we think some kids would really want to go. Some kids might say, "Too cold for me. I just wouldn't be out." They decided, "Let's cancel it for now. We can pull it back and redo it." For the sake, particularly of our eighth graders, that we would do that again later in the year. That's our hope.
So does that mean just thinking forward, you know, the, the rush is what usually February, some of March? Do they have the potential to be impacted by this as well?
They could. I mean, we're really keeping our fingers crossed that things are going to change by then, right? I mean, I think all the projections really seem to indicate that it would be closer to what we were looking at last fall. And, I'm sorry, last spring. So we were able to have some events last spring, some kids opted out of them. They were able to de-densify, and it's going to be on an event-by-event basis. Really trying to hold them, and I think, you know, I give the principals credit, but they're looking at options and how can we make this happen? And maybe it'll mean, though, that that event may need to be pushed back maybe a month later. Perhaps maybe a stop off this a little bit later rather than not having it at all.
So I know that I did, I did speak with the PTL president over there. They did look into having an outdoor heated tent. Not really within the budget of anyone's options.
Because there was assumptions that the board made the decision.
Absolutely.
So you've got quite a bit of not-so-nice conversations. And, you know, I just wanted, you know, verification. So it's, it's out here, and everybody is all being able to be on the same page and knowing where the decision came from.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to clarify that those decisions were made by the administration in consultation with the building principal. The decisions on the events have not come before the board for a vote. We started to consult with the board, kind of let you know, but, you know, on those particular decisions, now they, we own them. We own them. And we're going to try to have them again at another time, but we just, we did not feel that now is the right time.
I think maybe that was unfortunate because there was a misconception that they're canceled, it's done, we're not having it, you know, see you next year type of thing. So, but, so maybe a vote could be a better word, you know, we can, making sure everybody understands that it'll be, could potentially be redressed as the normal ones come ahead or as things change. As we know, they change, it seems like weekly still. You already have late, but they still change, so.
I understand.
Anyone else? All right. Future meetings are Monday, December 6th, reorganization meeting here at Service Center, 7:30. Motion for government?
So moved.